Are live and audio and video.
Okay, good evening. Well, we don't. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all colleagues. Been awhile. It's been awhile. So Mayor Patterson Howard had a couple of things she wanted to share with us before we get into the Finance and Planning Committee guest. So Mayor Patterson Howard.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Copeland. Thank you to the entire council for just giving me a few moments to present some very critical and concerning issues. Some critical and concerning issues that have come to our offices.
Join the meeting.
Oh, let me mute myself.
That's just people who joined in, Mayor Patterson Howard. Go ahead.
Okay, so within the past few days, we've received, well, within the past week, we have received notices from five title companies that they will no longer, at this time, that they are suspending underwriting titles here in the city of Mount Vernon because the controller has not processed transfer taxes. Transfer taxes are paid when a house is sold and the title company needs these transfer taxes to be processed so that they could underwrite the titles and the mortgages for the individuals who are selling or buying the houses. The following companies have, are discontinuing doing business and insuring deeds to property in the city of Mount Vernon as of January, as of June 1st through today. Old Republic, WFG, which is Williston Financial Group, Stewart Title, Benchmark Title Company, and Judicial Title. These are five of your larger title companies. I have the letters just for your information here and I can share them with you if you have not already received them. This is of a critical importance to residents of Mount Vernon because if you are trying to sell a home or you're trying to buy a home, that whole process is now difficult to do because they cannot have their titles underwritten and insured. Secondly, all of our development is being stymied right now for a very similar issue. Our developers pay into an escrow account. They create escrow accounts so that the land use boards working with the city council can walk them through the development process, whether it's through the Architectural Review Board, the zoning board, or the planning board, and to do different studies that they have to do to complete development projects here in the city of Mount Vernon. These projects have been stopped because the controller who holds possession of the escrow accounts is not processing hundreds of thousands of dollars in payments from developers to put in the escrow accounts so that the consultants can be paid. Mount Vernon has great opportunities for economic development, and unfortunately, this is stopping. We also know that this is a problem. We have lots of people, especially in the height of COVID, who are interested in moving out of densely populated cities like Manhattan and who are looking to purchase property here in the city of Mount Vernon. And those efforts are being stymied because they cannot get their titles underwritten. And the last major issue that I want to bring to you tonight is continued challenges in working with the controller in accepting and processing money for the Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Agency, which receives several million dollars a year from HUD. So this is not a new issue that is happening just under my tenure. We have histories of payments that have been sent back from the controller going back to February of 2019. But just the most recent report that we have on 2019 Continuum of Care, which pays rent for vulnerable residents who are mentally ill, chemically addicted, veterans, have HIV/AIDS or other physical disabilities. The controller has returned administrative funds and CDBG funds to the tune of $32,089.32. Those are 2019 Continuum of Care and Community Development Block Grant Funds. For 2020, in HUD payments, for Continuum of Care, again, these are rent payments that we pay for the most vulnerable of our residents. For 2020, she has returned $169,740.53 in payments that HUD has sent the city of Mount Vernon that underwrites and pays rent, again, for the mentally ill, the chemically addicted, those who are HIV-positive, veterans, and who are living with other disabilities. Continuum of Care is a program very similar to Section 8. It's basically Section 8 for people who are disabled. So in 2020, she has returned to HUD in Community Development Block Grant monies. Again, that's been drawn down and approved by HUD for payment to the city of Mount Vernon. The payment has been sent to the city of Mount Vernon, and the controller has returned in 2020 funds Community developed block grant funds. Some of this money is covering food distribution, which we know is critical to our community in the amount of almost $49,000. She has returned youth employment money for the Youth Bureau in the tune of almost $80,000. She has returned monies that we are scheduled to pay to the Guidance Center, about $56,000 in construction, trade, and carpentry monies. She has returned to HUD $30,000 in funding that is scheduled to go to My Sister's Place, which provides critical services to women and men who are involved in domestic violence. And she has also returned almost 40, well, about $41,000 in home monies. Home monies are given to landlords to renovate buildings and apartments and houses to maintain affordable housing units. So those are some of the monies that have been returned to HUD. We are also in the process where we are drawing down $163,140 in HUD payments in Continuum of Care, which is $115,000 for rent and 40, almost $48,000 for Continuum of Care. We are drawing those monies down. We held off on the drawdown of those monies because each time the controller sends money back to HUD, it's flagged as a violation or a fiscal concern, which can definitely impact our score as we try and apply for monies going forward. This is very concerning as we are part of an $18 million application that funds over 40 housing projects in the city in the county of Westchester. And if Mount Vernon does not properly manage their HUD programs, this can impact the entire allocation of over $18 million for the county of Westchester. So these are some of the things that we have to bring in control. The Urban Renewal Agency has no findings with HUD. They are in proper standing. They've had no program findings through their program audits. This is the first time in many years, for the past two years, that they've had no program findings. And so the only problem that HUD has with us right now is that we are returning money that they have already authorized and paid to the city of Mount Vernon based on services that we've already rendered. And so that is concerning. And what is additionally concerning is Mount Vernon is scheduled to get $1 million in Community Development Block Grant monies from HUD in the next few weeks to help us deal with the COVID crisis that we've had. This is CARES Act money that our Senator Schumer and Gillibrand, as well as our Congressman Elliot Engel fought very hard for Mount Vernon to get. And that money, we are scheduled to use about a quarter of a million dollars to help support our small businesses who have been struggling because they've been closed to COVID. We have another portion of that money that will help us purchase ambulances here so that Mount Vernon can have their own ambulances, which we're short ambulances. And we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a contract. This will allow us to have our own ambulances and serve our community in preparation potentially for another round of COVID. And then we're scheduled to receive $508,000 in emergency shelter grant money from HUD because of the CARES Act as well. And that money will go to help individuals who have not been able to pay their rent because they've been laid off or furloughed or terminated due to the COVID crisis, and it will be used for rent eviction prevention funds. And so this is critical money that our community needs. This is not taxpayer money. This is free money coming from the federal government. We already have right now the money that's been returned to HUD, which is totaling $752,000. And we have another $1.5 million that we can be at risk of losing if the controller refuses to accept this money. The Urban Renewal Agency has done everything on our end to complete the 2016 audit. The auditors are just waiting to gain access to the controller's office so that they can do the onsite testing of documents to finalize the 2016 Urban Renewal Audit. They have not been able to get into the controller's office. And while we know that City Hall is closed to outside business, City Hall is open to complete audits. The business of audits must continue. Urban Renewal is audit-ready for 2017 and 2018. We just need the controller to give access to the auditors to come in and do the hands-on audit in her office. And we will be able to move forward with the next two years of the audit. This is the reason that she states that she doesn't accept the money. But this is pass-through money. It does not impact the city, and it is free money again to the city. And we could potentially stand to lose over $3 million a year in free money from HUD that will pay the rent of 60 families and provide services to vulnerable populations here in the city of Mount Vernon. I just wanted to give you that update. I thank you for this time. And I know Sylvia Bolivar will be coming before you to present to you some of our five-year consolidated plan for HUD, which will bring in over $12 million in formula monies, not including monies that we are awarded annually from HUD through a competitive process. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions of the mayor? Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right. Did you want to update them about the census?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Just absolutely. We are still working towards the census, Mount Vernon. We have not, I don't believe we've hit 50% yet, but we anticipate now that we are moving into the Phase 2 reopening, and we know that some of the churches can open at 25% capacity. And we're going to be able to do more community outreach as long as we maintain social distancing and use the proper CDC protocols. We are looking to hit the streets and reach out to our community. We will be working with several organizations and neighborhood associations and civic businesses, associations to do outreach to the community. This is critical monies that we need in Mount Vernon that will help us with everything from paving to bridge repair to hospitals, schools, fire, police, medical, mental health services, youth and senior services, job training, reentry services, and every food, hunger relief, every bit of money that we apply for as a city government that our school district applies for, our library applies for, any not-for-profits and neighborhood associations, any type of public and private money that you apply for requires that you give demographic information on your community, and it has to be done and aligned with the census. So if we don't fill out the census, then we're going to have the wrong information, and it's going to impact how we compete for funds, as well as the type of funds that will be allocated to our community, not just for this year, but it will impact us for the next 10 years. And I'll assume that you're going to give an update to the people on the school board race as the governor has made some adjustments. And ballots can be delivered to the school district tomorrow until 5:00 p.m. In person, you can put them in a ballot box there that they have set up. But they can be mailed to the school district through the 16th, which is next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. So he has extended the mail-in portion, but you still have to drop off your ballots by 5:00 p.m. tomorrow for school and library election.
Actually, when I was talking about the census, I was talking about the census motorcade, but I didn't want to cut you off. He was on the roll. So we'll wait. We'll wait till Wednesday after our census meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and have a good evening, everyone.
Stay safe. I'm looking forward to lunch tomorrow.
So Phase 2, can I just say this really quickly? So Phase 2 for city residents, Phase 2 starts tomorrow. And what does Phase 2 mean? Phase 2 means that our restaurants can provide outdoor dining, and they can continue to do takeout and pickup and drop off whatever, takeout dining, as well as external dining. Our beauty salons, our barber shops, our nail salons, our African braiding, our eyelash places, tattoo parlors and massage parlors will be open. Real estate offices can open. Commercial construction offices and commercial real estate businesses can often open. Rental cars, leasing and car auto sales start tomorrow as well. And retail stores will be open for beyond just curbside business. And churches can now open at 25% of their occupancy. So those are some of the things that are happening. We ask that people continue to be safe. We are very excited about the business community opening, but we do not want to have to close the business community because the numbers in our community begin to spike. So we want to make sure that happens. And I'm sorry, this is just the last thing, and I promise. I want to say congratulations and thank you to the city council for working with us to make sure that we were able to pass the salary resolutions. We were able to promote Marcel J. Alafir, a 32-year veteran of the city of Mount Vernon Police Department, to chief today. We promoted Lieutenant Charlotte Neil Young, a 25-year veteran of the Police Department, to lieutenant. We promoted Kim Robert Odendo, a 13-year veteran of the Fire Department, to deputy chief and chief of operations. And we also promoted the Dr. Darren Morton, from former Recreation and Planning Commissioner, to the Chief of Staff for the city of Mount Vernon. We definitely want to work with the city council in doing some salary role, not salary rollbacks, position rollbacks. But we are waiting on financial records and reports that we have not been able to obtain from the controller so that we know the status of our revenue and our expenses. We are operating in the financial blind because we do not have access at all to financial reports and records as to how we are performing in the collection of taxes. And we are still getting lots of complaints from residents who said that they have sent in their tax payments as far as two months ago, and their taxes have still not been paid and processed, which clearly is impacting their bank accounts. They would like to be able to balance their accounts. And Mount Vernon definitely needs the money in our coffers. We cannot have checks just sitting in a mailbox, waiting to be deposited. The city needs to operate, and we need movement on this. And I look forward to partnering with the city council to move our financial and our fiscal operations to a better place here in the city. So thank you, and that is really it.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, you too. Deputy clerk, are the guests there, here? Unmute yourself.
Thank you. That would be quite helpful. If any of the guests would come in on an audio line, please come off mute. We do not see any of the guests that were to come in on a video line. Deputy Commissioner Bolivar or Jennifer Alpha are not on video lines at this time.
So there's nobody there?
There is no one. Just, just members of the public.
Okay, so we'll do our referrals then.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Duarte, Legislation and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, so item number four is called for. Item number five is held. They had a date for their application, block party application in May. We've been reaching out to them and have not gotten a response back, so they just may not be in the offices. So we're holding item number five. Item number seven is called for. They've adjusted the dates, but again, not sure that they will still be visible. So item number seven is called for. Item number 12 is for information. Item number 18 is for information. Items 23, 26, 27, and 28 are all called for at this time. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, the last four are called for, or is that what you said?
Yes, hold for it. All, all four, those last four are called for.
Thank you.
Human Resources?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items today. Items 20 is for information, and items 21 is on the agenda. That's all I have for today.
I'm sorry, you, Councilman Thompson, you said on the agenda?
On the agenda, 21.
Thank you, sir.
Is that an amended letter? Or is that the same letter, 21?
It's the same letter. There was some unreadiness that was cured. At least as far as I am aware, no one has any outstanding concerns, so it's going to be on it.
Okay, did anyone have any questions on, on 21?
No, I think the question's been answered because last time it was Corporation Council requested to call for it, and, and he says that it's, all the issues have been cured, so I think we're, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam President.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So Corporation Council, do we have anything in writing from, from civil service online?
Well, that wasn't a request. Do you need something in writing?
I would just like to see what their position is.
They didn't have a problem with it, but I can request that they put something in writing?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman, you're up. Public Safety and Codes?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one is called for. Item number two is called for. Item number 13 is for information. Item number 14, I'm still pending the feedback from the body. Item number 15 is called for. Item number 16 is called for. As a matter of fact, item number 16 is held.
Okay.
Item number 22 is called for. Item number 24, I'm still waiting for Corporation Council to provide, once they have the staff, to be able to appropriately respond to that request to get that legislation done. Item number 29, I'd like to have on the agenda. I don't know if you have all had an opportunity to review. And I have an add-on that I'd like to have on the agenda.
What's your add-on?
The, the add-on is on the radio. It's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, 5G, 5G, I got it.
No, no, not the 5G. This is the radio for the police department. The update from the county, how they're updating the radios.
Oh, okay, I saw it. I saw it. I'm sorry. I did want to, I don't, because I do late-night emails. I thought I hit send, but I must not have on this charter revision because I did write a whole email.
I remember you said that. I remember.
You know, for the record, I support all their recommendations. I don't think they're that difficult. But I, I didn't hit send, so tonight at 2:00 o'clock when I wake up to heat my back, I'll hit send.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Finance and Planning?
Yeah, there's one question.
Oh, somebody had a question?
Councilman.
For item 29, I'm not sure if we should put that on the agenda without speaking with our telecommunications consultant.
Do we, do we have that on the agenda? Oh, Brian, I mean, Court Counsel, aren't we supposed to hire? I thought we had discussion about, didn't we have to hire the?
So what we did is, we actually did a transfer last time. Put the $20,000 into escrow. I, I'm being hopeful that the controller will follow through, that, as the mayor has said, that has been an issue with escrow accounts. And so assuming she'll follow through with what the council says to do, then we can hire the consultant.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So, so there are two pieces of legislation that I submitted on the 5G question. One is, New York State actually is working on their own piece of legislation. And I would like us as a council to, of course, issue a resolution in support of that. And then this resolution is to ask for kind of like a moratorium, a delay on the implementation of any 5G in our community. The, the, the jury is still out on this. There's lots of evidence that point to the health effects on this. And I, I offered to share any information that this body wants in terms of, in terms of reviewing for your own self. But I think it's worth the discussion, and I would like us to at least err on the side of caution. You know, because we are already a community ravaged by so many things, right? The health disparity when it comes to the systemic oppression and racism, when it comes to all of these things, and, and 5G, I think, you know, is one of those things that we should all be concerned about. We should all be concerned about it. So that's why this legislation is proffered. So thank you, Madam President.
From my opinion.
Court Counsel, I'm talking.
Yeah.
I'm talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let me know when I can talk.
Boy, who would have thought I could ever make a lawyer be quiet? I've made it. I've made it. Anyway.
Paying me. I'll do whatever you like.
So when I was at the Congressional Black Caucus in, this is what year? This is 2020. So it must have been 2018. I attended the 5G presentation, and I have it because Congresswoman Yvette Clark is the chair of that subcommittee. So I have a whole bunch of information on that. And I'm looking, and I know it's here in this office somewhere, and I'm going to find it and get it to you all over the weekend, too. That question of, of the health concerns did come up at that committee, but I cannot recall how it ended. So let me look for that while I'm here in the office downstairs. I know it's here. I brought it in here. Now, Corporation Counsel, you can speak.
Thank, thank you. So in my view, the erring on the side of caution is actually waiting for our consultants to give us opinion on this. I can tell you what the public policy is surrounding technolog, technology. And that is that the federal government has pretty much usurped the authority of the states and the municipalities to govern this area of law, specifically when it comes to science of it, right? So that is why there are standards that are federal. There are consultants. The consultants that we recommended, they represent municipalities exclusively. As you may know, telecommunications companies are very well-funded. They like you to go into court. And I have been working with them on the other side because they believe that they have a right to do this now. I've worked with them and said, this is a significant issue for my community, and we are not going to just lay down and allow you to do this. But the fact of the matter is, there is a federal law, and that requires that they have the right to do certain things. And that is outside of the scope of what we're able to do. So we need to find out, hire the professionals, that know what that is and make recommendations. I'm trying to avoid having lawsuits, which are costly and well-funded, that the city cannot do. But at the same time, make sure that we are within the bounds of the federal law.
If I may, Madam President, I just want to say that this is a growing movement. And when Madam President finds her notes, perhaps it'll indicate, but it's a growing movement, national movement. And when Madam President finds her notes, perhaps it'll indicate, but it's a growing movement, national movement, right? I participated on a conference call a few nights ago from municipalities and, you know, agencies all over the country, where this is a movement that's going and it's not a given, right? I understand that, you know, the, the telecom giants have shielded themselves in many ways. But municipalities and communities are pushing back and they're pushing back with a vengeance. And Eastern Connecticut, for example, just passed their moratorium recently. Does not prevent what we, what we can do. So I'm going to say that, and I'm going to insist on this. I, I intend to make this a really big deal because I think that the health of our community may be at risk. And so I'm going to make this a very big deal. But, but we should, we should do everything within our power to make sure that we are representing our community well in terms of protecting the well-being, the health and well-being of our community. And, and I will, I can share with you, you know, I'm, there are organizations in Westchester County that's working on this. This is something that I think is going to gather momentum. It is going to gather serious momentum and particularly in the atmosphere that is existing right now, where the disparity, the oppression, the greed that has corrupted our society and is desperately affecting communities of color, it will not stand because people are fighting back.
Okay, can I respond? Okay, can I, I, I just want to say, I, 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 I don't disagree that there may be movement. I don't disagree of the importance of what it is and what it means to our community. However, movements do not affect current law and we have to be compliant with current law, right? So while there can be a movement, it does not alleviate us from our responsibility to move applications forward, specifically when the timelines say that they need to be moved forward. What we can do, which is if we don't want to lie down and we don't want to be proactive, is we need to hire the professionals to tell us what our rights are and then we can do that. Having a social justice movement is one thing, complying with the law is another thing. And I'm, the other part, piece of it is, as we've discussed, that the city is currently financially strapped as much, most other municipalities are, and we cannot endure costly litigation behind this issue. We don't even know if we're going to be able to afford the consultant. Let's see how quickly this thing gets moving. I'm ready today to hire the consultant.
Well, this legislation asks for a moratorium, Madam President, for, sorry. It's asked for a moratorium until December 31st, I think it is. So that's what this legislation is asking for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I have a question for the Councilwoman? Councilwoman, can I take you back to item 14 and 24? What were your, your referral determinations? I'll take you off mute.
Both of those were pending.
Wait, so item 12, item 14 is called for, Deputy Clerk?
Thank you.
And item 24 is called for as well. And I note that a constituent sent a letter in regarding requesting a seasonal ban. I hope you refer them to the legislation that's on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
That completes your report?
Yes.
And thank you so much. Finance and planning? Oh, did, did the guest come, Deputy Clerk? No? Okay, finance and planning?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, I've lost battery power. I don't know if it's going to charge. Oh, there we go. Let's see, it goes out. I don't know why. I'm good for now, I just, if it goes out, I'll come over, thank you. Sorry, sorry, everyone. Items three and six are being called for. Items eight, nine, 10, and 11 are for information. Items 17 and 25, I believe, were both enacted. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, that's correct.
Six, I'll read them again. Three is called for, six is called for, eight, nine, 10, and 11 are for information. 17 and 25, I believe, were enacted in my abstention at the last meeting. And that concludes my report.
Okay, so I, I had sent you all a copy of the, um, the bill proposals from the New York State Association. I forget what they are now. It used to be the New York State Association of Black and Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian. It's a whole lot of names now, but with any, with any, uh, at any, at any rate, did you, I sent the bills also to you. Did any of you have a chance to look at it? I was hoping we could do a resolution in support of them. To date, they have passed, according to our senators and our assemblymen, they have passed the chokehold bill, the reporting weapons. Wait, wait a minute, let me get the full one. Wait a minute. Okay, the Stat Act, the right to record police activity, the establishes the crime of aggravated strangulation. And the peace officer requires a law enforcement or peace officer who discharges his or her weapon, where a person could be struck by a bullet to immediately report the incident. You would think that was already the case, but it's not. So those four bills are done so far. I know they're addressing the rest of the agenda, I guess, tomorrow. What's your pleasure on that? And I also know that the Police Commissioner was forwarding a letter in support of all the bills, but I just wanted to get some feedback from you all on what you thought about the bills.
I, I think a resolution, Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
I think a resolution would be in order. You know, we expect that they're going to pass and they're going to be federal bills as well. So, I mean, it just shows our commitment and our support, so I think it's a good move.
I'm glad you said that because it would come out of your committee. Any other, I got, any other feedback on that? Okay, I need to, uh, yes, who's, who's speaking? I think I heard Councilwoman Duarte first.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, um, I, I, I'm interested to see the letter from the Commissioner and certainly having his input and support is, is valuable. And, but I, I agree that passing a resolution in support of these measures is, is vital at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Thompson?
No, I'm absolutely in support of it, that's all I want to say.
Great. Marcus, we don't need your vote at this point, but we'd like to hear your, no, I'm just kidding. We'd like to hear your input as well.
I absolutely support it, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to see if I could track down the Commissioner real quick. So why don't, well, I, I can't, why don't you talk about, oh, who's, Councilwoman Ferguson, yes?
Madam President, I just wanted to give you, you know, just to give you a heads up that when you, when you ask if there are any other things, there are a couple of things I'd like to raise, um, okay.
I'm going to take my face, but I'm listening. Because I got a.
Thanks, Madam President.
All right.
Who are you, Ferguson? She said, go ahead.
Oh, it's me? Okay, so, um, so there, there are a couple of things from an economic perspective, right? I don't know what the rules are and I don't know if Deputy Clerk can tell us about outdoor dining, but we've seen in other municipalities in other cities where they're expanding the opportunity for restaurants to be able to eat outdoors on the sidewalks or even in some cases, they're closing streets. And I wondered if, if our city council would consider that for restaurants to encourage, to encourage people to be able to eat, you know, to be able to use the restaurants and to, to, um, so, so I would like to propose that, Madam President, that, you know, we somehow pass an ordinance that allows restaurants to be able to do outdoor dining in a more expansive way than we have previously.
Um, I, if, well, okay. Councilman Thompson?
Yes, I would, I would be in support of that because of you. If you look at most of our restaurants, they, they have the capacity on the inside. However, the outside space is, is, um, not enough. So I would, I would be for us closing off, um, certain areas where they can utilize, uh, you know, and would be for all of those businesses to be able to, um, practice the social distancing as well. So as long as it's not on major streets, I, I think that would work.
Right, thank you. Um, um, President Brotem, if I may, I just wanted to also say that in terms of promoting, you know, business and economic development and recovery, that I think pushing our, because we have 95 different ethnic groups, that pushing our city as a food destination, particularly at this time, and, and making it more inviting for people to come here and be able to eat outdoors may, you know, I, I think that may be helpful to our economy and to our small business and our restaurant owners. So I think it's something that we should really look at and be thoughtful about, really, you know, trying to be creative and, and generous and really generous in any kind of ordinance that we do to really push that in, um, in Westchester County, to say Mount Vernon is doing this in a, in a really expansive way and you can have all these choices of all these wonderful foods.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
Okay.
I'm, I'm waiting.
Yeah, I had one, I had a couple more things. So the CCRB is something that we've talked about, was passed, wasn't passed. I cannot even find the original electronic file document.
I haven't, now that I know where it is.
You know where it is?
Okay, great. Community, I have that.
Okay, so if you would send that, share that with me, Madam President. I would like to move this legislation, I think it's time.
We, we passed it. The thing is we had to amend it to include a, a money amount.
Okay. So whatever needs to be done, but the, but the, the copy that we passed, Madam President, if you look at the legislation, I think it had the watermark of draft across it. So I think that there, you know, we, we can.
That's not the legislation, that's the, um, that's the, where.
Not the legislation, but the back of documents, yeah.
Yeah, it, that, but it was until, you know, it passed. It, it is a draft until it passed. And the board has to be, the board has to be formulated and created so they can vote on this. That's why it still says draft.
Okay, so Madam President, and so, and so will we insist that this will be a civilian body, right? I think that, right, it's a civilian body, not a combination of civilian and, and police or police union, but a civilian body in the true sense of the word. Because in this environment now, I think it behooves us to really harness the power of the movement that's happening and ensure that, that our civilian complaint review board is one that will stand the test.
Okay, so I'm, to what you've said, somebody needs to mute themselves, I can hear you. So to what you said, it says members shall be, um, residents of the city, well, you don't need that part, that the important part is that they come from all seven sectors and that they're not, I mean, this is very thorough. So when, I, I'm going to have him email it to you all again.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
That's the rules, that's everything, the only thing we couldn't decide is how, how much money to put in it and how, because New York City has a much bigger operation, it's like millions and millions because they have a very large, you know, they have a very large contingency to deal with. Ours is not as large. So we couldn't, when we were doing it, we couldn't, we were trying to figure out what salary we would pay the executive of it. Because there is a staff person, the executive director, I think that was the title of who the person was. And we were trying to figure out the money, so.
Right, I, I understand. I know that, you know, especially, and especially in these times, that it will be particularly challenging. So, yeah, and then, um, the, the other item, and I know Corporation Counsel is, you know, has a lot on his plate, um, that the, the, the ban on the gas leaf blower legislation was pretty much complete. And so I don't know, um, you know, what exactly help is needed with and if Mr. Goodside, our legislative aide, might be able to assist so that we can move that piece of legislation forward. I, I, you know, I, I, I say again that Mr. Miller wrote a letter and, and for some reason it went into finance and planning, don't ask me why. But that letter was, was making the recommendation about the, the ban on the gas leaf blowers. But, um, but this is something that's been discussed for more than, you know, for, for about two years. Um, and then I wanted to, then last item is the functioning of the city council office. And, um, I just wanted to, if I may, um, kind of review, um, that all city council members are elected at large and as such I have equal, um, role, responsibility, and authority. And I, I don't.
President.
Well, the president is elected to represent the body on the Board of Estimates and to cast a vote on behalf of the body as reflected by the city council. So thank you, Madam President. Um, I wanted that to be clear because I get the sense that, um, that there's some difference in how city council members, and this is not accusatory, this is merely to review so that everybody is clear that the, um, the roles and responsibilities are equal and that no one has any more power than the other, except of course, Madam President, has the, um, she votes on behalf of the council and the Board of Estimate. I wanted that to be on the record and clear.
Okay, so that's a conversation that I think we, we should continue internally. Deputy Commissioner Bolivar has joined us.
Thank you, Madam President.
I understand, thank you. As well as the, I think the mayor came back with her, is what I'm understanding. But Deputy Commissioner, are you on? Uh, Councilman Griffith, that's your committee, so if you could take the lead on this?
And if I, I'm, I just came back for two minutes. So I had my leadership meeting today and just received an update because as we're opening for Phase One and we're opening for Phase Two, the community and the council, I just wanted to give you an update as to where we were with City Hall on the reopening of City Hall. So we will have a soft reopening of City Hall as of next Monday, the 15th. So Mount Vernon City Hall will have a soft reopening. The departments that will open as part of our first week's reopening are the Building Department, the Planning Department, the Registrar.
The Registrar's been open.
No, I mean, but open and people can come in. And these departments are being open because these are the departments that are going to receive the Plexiglas first. So we want to make sure, you know, we know people need birth certificates, death certificates, they need. So the City Clerk's Office, the Registrar's Office, the Building Department, the Planning Department, the Comptroller's Office, the Water Department, and the Law Department, the Law Department, and the Assessor. So those will be the first departments to open. We have, we were waiting on the delivery of the Plexiglas. As you know, everyone around the country is ordering Plexiglas. And just as we are requiring businesses to have certain things in place for the protection of their staff and the public, we needed to make sure that we were the models in doing that. And so those are the offices that will have their reception areas outfitted first to protect staff and the public. And then on Monday, the 22nd of June, will be the full reopening of City Hall with all of the other departments being reopened, including DPW, the mayor's office, Recreation, the Youth Bureau, and, and any other departments that need to be opened. So the soft opening will happen next Monday. We are encouraging those who need to do business with these departments to call and make an appointment. Many of these departments have been seeing people, they just have not been letting them in, but they've been processing paperwork and permits and things of that nature and meeting people outside in the back to receive documentation and to give out permits. But we will now be allowing people back into the building. We will be using strictly for the public, the Stevens Avenue entrance. The cop will be posted there, we will be taking temperatures as people come into the building. All visitors who are entering will have their temperature taken. And they will be led into the Stevens Avenue entrance, which is handicap accessible, not the front door, not the back door. We will not open those doors to the public because we want to make sure we have our safety officer prepared to take temperatures. And we're asking that people call in advance and make appointments so that we do not have people waiting in the hall. so we do not have people waiting in the hallways. And we're also asking that as people come into the building, you will see all of the social distancing signs, you will see up and down staircase signs, as well as please understand that only two people will be allowed in the elevator at a time so that we can also comply with social distancing. So we have put into place, and you are required to wear a mask when you come into City Hall to do business. So we are excited about the reopening, the slow reopening and the phased reopening of our public businesses. But we are also excited to be able to receive our residents back into City Hall and provide an efficient level of services. So that's the update that I wanted to finally give, so the public would know. Thank you so much.
I had a quick question. With regards to the mailroom, we've been getting calls and emails about checks being held. Do the checks still come in here? How to tell me your process for.
Are you speaking about tax payments? So the controller has her own P.O. box at the post office. We go to the post office daily to pick up mail, but she has instructed the post office not to release her mail to our post, to our management services team, which processes the mail that comes in. So we just bring in the mail that is addressed to City Hall, City of Mount Vernon. She has her own separate P.O. box. Whatever we bring in to City Hall from our general mailbox at the post office, we put in each of the department's boxes in the mailroom. The mailroom is open every day. It is not locked, even if staff is not there. So any of our departments can access it and go in and get their mail at their leisure. The Controller's Office only comes upstairs maybe once, and if at best, twice a week to retrieve their mail. As their mailbox has gotten full, we have taken a big mail bin down to the office. She refuses to accept it into the door and has instructed the staff to please leave the mail bin outside of the door and will not take the mail into her door until the staff person walks away. So we have, you know, made sure that we've tried to bring the mail down to her. We have asked her staff to come upstairs to pick up the mail. The only person in her office that is allowed to retrieve the mail from the mailroom, based on her recommendation, is Rosemary Canaccio, and she only comes into the office several days a week. And the controller has also told several residents who sent their payments in registered mail because they wanted to make sure that they had a receipt. She's asked them not to send it in registered mail. And she's explained to them that their checks have not been processed because she can only take a certain number of checks to the bank each day because the bank will only allow her to do a certain number of transactions. I've run a business for twenty years as a CEO, and we've been able to take hundreds and thousands of checks in a batch to the banks. So banks have never, ever limited the amount of money that they're going to take from you as a business entity. And that's why they have a professional business line. So we only had maybe two days in the beginning of when City Hall first closed that we missed the mail because the person in our mailroom became ill. And so we had to make another arrangement to bring that mail in. We picked up mail from the post office three to four days a week. And now we pick up mail from the post office every day as of about the last week of March. So there is no internal reason within the executive branch or the administrative branch while payments have not been processed. We can only pick up the mail, bring it, and give it to the controller. Once it's in her hands or in her mailbox, we don't have any control as to how she processes it after that.
Okay, thanks. I just want to follow up since we were live with the public.
Thank you.
Get the calls.
All right. Take care.
You too.
Council President, we do have Deputy Commissioner Bolivar on the line.
Okay. Commissioner?
I'll take her off mute.
Commissioner?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
I apologize for the technical difficulties I've had. So thank you for giving us an opportunity to present. I also have on the phone who's joining us, our consultant, Jennifer Alfa with TDA Consulting, and she has over twenty years of experience in community development work and has been working with the city and with me on the five-year consolidated plan. Mr. Holmes, is Jennifer on the call as well?
Do not have her on an independent line unless she dialed in. Ms. Alfa, if you are on one of the dial-in lines.
She is.
Then if she can come off mute herself, I don't know which number that is. We have about three or four members of the public now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
Did it right. Thank you.
There you go.
So I have Jennifer on the phone on the Zoom presentation here with us. And we wanted to have an opportunity to talk to you about the five-year plan and to answer any questions the city council or the public may have. And I'm just going to give a quick overview and then I'll have Jennifer present. We are really delighted and proud to be at where we are today with the five-year plan. This is a plan that every five years, we need to present HUD how we plan to invest the millions of dollars that we receive to promote community development, housing, economic development, public infrastructure, and to meet the present needs of the community, focusing on low and moderate income persons. We have, for the past two years, as you all know, been redesigning our CDBG program and really with a focus on investing in public safety. During the past year and a half, for example, we purchased three fire trucks for the city. We are looking at how we're going to use the funds that we are going to be receiving from HUD to respond to the needs of the city as it relates to the pandemic. So we'll be getting one point five million dollars there. And we are just also looking at redesigning our home programs. So we will be allocating funds for rental assistance for low-income residents of the city. So those are just, in a very quick overview, what we're looking to do. But with that, I'm going to give Jennifer an opportunity to talk about the five-year plan and then we will answer questions that you all may have. And I also want you all to know that we went through a very extensive public comment process where we engaged with stakeholders all across the city. We had them fill online surveys. We went to community forums, we went to neighborhood associations, to churches. And we worked very, very hard to make sure we had a cross section of all of the different constituencies that touch these programs. So with that, I'm going to have Jennifer talk about the plan.
Great. Thanks so much. So as Sylvia mentioned, the five-year plan is really a strategic plan that guides your use of HUD funds over the next five years. Each time you develop a five-year plan, you're also planning for that first year of the five-year plan. So in this plan, we're also putting together strategies for the 2020 to 2021 action plan year. And in addition to all of the work that Sylvia mentioned with respect to community outreach, we also did extensive data analysis. So the data combined with the community outreach is really what helps us to assess priority needs. And then from those priority needs, we develop goals. And those goals will guide your funding decisions over the next five years. In this plan, through our outreach and our data, we saw that there's a significant housing affordability challenge in Vernon. About twenty-four percent of households are cost burdened. And cost burdened means that they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. So their rent or their mortgage, their utility bills. So about twenty-four percent of your city residents, so about a quarter, are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. And that's pretty significant. That number becomes more significant for folks who are lower income. They spend much more of a higher percentage on their housing costs. Similarly, renters spend a lot more than thirty percent on their housing costs. So renters and folks with lower incomes are definitely the hardest hit when it comes to that that criteria of cost burden. We also heard a lot from folks that they're interested in obviously strengthening the economy and looking at unemployment issues. Now, your unemployment figures before COVID were somewhere around five or six percent. Obviously, they're much higher now and we can't really, you know, day-to-day, those are going to fluctuate. But what the plan does is basically look at trends. And so when you are, when we're looking at this data and collecting the community outreach, we're really thinking about how things have sort of trended in Mount Vernon. And obviously, the effects of COVID are just going to intensify any trends we're already seeing. So those housing affordability issues are going to get much worse now, obviously. Same with unemployment, needs for economic development. And so while our goals for the next five years span the gamut from looking at affordability issues, addressing community services that help support lower-income individuals, and also helping the homeless. This year, for the first time in about ten years, the city was awarded an ESG grant, which is designated specifically for helping homeless individuals. And then also the economic development. So while our five-year goals address all of those things, for the first year annual action plan, we're really focusing the attention towards rental assistance. Because as I said, lower-income renters are the hardest hit when it comes to cost burden. So we're focusing mostly on rental assistance when it comes to housing and also economic development. Because that's where folks are going to, you know, need the biggest boost, both from the business perspective and, you know, helping people find jobs. So that's sort of the summary.
So the unemployment numbers in the report, they indicate the unemployment rate pre-pandemic was eight point seven percent in the city. And the national average at the time was seven point four percent. So pre-pandemic, we were already above the national average. And also in certain pockets of the city, our unemployment rate was fifteen percent or more. We included in the report the unemployment numbers from January through March. We have not included April and May. And those, as you have seen in the news, that there were some classification issues, we'll be looking at that. But already prior to the pandemic, our unemployment numbers were very high. So what we wanted to do is make sure that the funds we set aside for economic development, we geared towards small business assistance and also job training, workforce development. So in the 2020 annual action plan, what we're going to look to do is we're setting aside funds for public infrastructure. So that can be anything from the purchase of ambulances or fire trucks to possibly purchasing shot spotters. So we're really focused a lot on public safety. We're focused also setting aside funds for economic development and also public service funds. We're looking to address hunger. We have seen that the Recreation Department has done an incredible job responding to the needs of the community. And those numbers keep growing every day. In addition, we're seeing that the food pantries in the city, there's a high demand, not only for food, but for diapers and formula. And so we may be responding by ensuring that we address the hunger in the city. And we've been partnering very closely with Feeding Westchester as well, but we just wanted to let you know what we're looking at right now. We're monitoring very closely to see what the data shows because we want to make sure that we respond quickly to the needs of the city, of the community. Particularly during these very challenging times. And with that, I mean, I don't know if the city council has specific questions for us. Do know that in order, we estimate that we will be receiving eleven million dollars over the next, over the five-year period from 2020 to 2024. In order for us to be eligible for these funds, we're going to need to submit our five-year plan. It is currently out for public comment. We were able, because of the waivers and because of what is happening right now, HUD has shortened the public comment period from thirty days to five days. So we opened the public comment period this past Friday. And the public comment period will end on Friday, June twelve.
Excuse me. Did any council members have, were you finished, Deputy Commissioner? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. I wanted to open it up to any questions the council may have of me or Jennifer Alfa or consultants.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I have a question, Madam President.
Yes, Council.
So a couple actually. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. I really appreciate your presentation. I think this is helpful for the council. So the plan was pretty much formulated pre-COVID, correct?
Correct.
So how dynamic is it? And do you think it adequately reflects some of the, I'm going to use the word fissures, that have been overexposed with this pandemic?
So what we tried to do, and Jennifer and I have been working very closely together, in response to the pandemic, I wanted to make sure we were as thoughtful as possible monitoring very closely what has been happening in the city and the needs of the city. And so the goals are very broad purposely so that we could pivot very quickly. In terms of the CDBG funds, we are sitting aside, we are receiving one point five million dollars, a million from CDBG to respond to the pandemic and five hundred thousand from ESG to address the need of the homeless. So what the goal there will be is to use some of those monies from CDBG to purchase two ambulances because we want to make sure that there are health disparities in the city. And so one of the things I want to make sure that we do is that we respond in real time to the needs of the community so they don't have to wait a long time for an ambulance to take them to the hospital. And now with what's happening with Montefiore Hospital, we are going to have to travel outside of Mount Vernon. So I want to make sure that we are thoughtful about the health disparities and healthcare, not only now, but in the future. And if there is a second wave of this, we're going to need to respond very quickly. So the idea is to purchase two ambulances. The idea is to set aside monies for small business assistance. So what I want to do is release an application, actually two. One specifically for restaurants to provide assistance to restaurants and another one for other small businesses so that we're able to respond to their needs. And then we're also looking at using our public service funds to address hunger in the city. And I've been encouraging our churches to become members of Feeding Westchester so that they also have access to that network as well. Because as I indicated earlier, the numbers are increasing in food pantries across the city. I've convened phone calls with Feeding Westchester and I've spoken with the food pantries and that's what we're seeing. So we're trying to pivot. We're trying to have very broad goals so that we can respond fairly quickly.
Thank you. Madam President, if I may, have another question?
Did anyone else, before you go with a sec, did I unmute? Yes, I did. Did anyone else have a question? Before, because we got to have everyone have at least one. Did anyone else have a question? I'm looking. No, no, no? Okay, Councilwoman, you're on.
Thank you, Madam President. So Deputy Commissioner, one of the things that I hear in the community is the fact that information does not get. that information does not get to everyone. Access to information is sometimes limited. With this, with the rental assistance, with the application for restaurants, with, you know, economic development grants that may be available, what is the plan for ensuring that this information is saturated in the community? That nobody will have the opportunity to say they did not hear about these opportunities for rental assistance or for the economic development, particularly for restaurants? We just talked about, a little bit about this. We are a community dense with restaurants, right? 95 different ethnic groups, lots of great food, plenty of restaurants, and they are going to need help. How do we ensure that these folks get the information that they need? And the city council as well. I would like to be really kept abreast, you know, at every step of the way, on the process, so that I can fulfill my responsibility of sharing it in the community.
That's an excellent question. So I've been thinking a lot about this, and one of the things that I'm pushing for is, in addition to the city receiving funds, the county will be receiving funds, and the state is receiving funds, to respond to the needs of the community in light of what's happening. So as many of you know, the governor has, is allocating funds for small businesses and nonprofit organizations, and there is a pre-application that is taking place right now, and it's going to be run by LISC. So one of the things we're doing is, starting next Friday, I believe, and I need to confirm because the date has changed, we will be convening a webinar with LISC, who will be running the application process for small businesses. And we will be partnering with Lehman College SBDC, and they will provide technical assistance to any small business that's interested in applying for those funds from the governor. And so we plan to do a lot of webinars, Access to Capital, because we want to ensure that we support our small businesses as much as possible. The reality is that the federal funds that were set aside for small businesses, the 95% of our black businesses are microbusinesses, so 10 or less employees. The majority of them have not been able to access those federal funds. So it leaves it up to the states and the municipalities to fill that gap. I'm cognizant of that. And so I'm working to ensure that we spread the word regarding the governor's funds, because he wants to make sure that small businesses, minority businesses, MWVs have access to these funds at the state level. So we are firming up the date next week of the webinar, and what I'll make sure we do is inform all of the city councils, so that you can inform your different networks, so that they are part of this process. We will, we are committed to ensuring we do as many webinars and technical assistance as we can, so that there are many different funding streams that our small businesses can access. Once, and I want to make sure that we do that as quickly as possible for a number of reasons. One is, I believe the funds from the governor, that small businesses will be able to access it a lot quicker than they will our funds, for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, once we submit the plan to HUD, they have 45 days to review. And so I estimate that at the earliest, we would get our funds in August. So between now and then, I want to make sure that whatever other funding streams are available, we make that available, and we inform the community about them. So you'll be hearing from us a lot more, and we'll need your help to distribute this information to your networks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think that's crucial. Sorry, Madam President. Thank you.
Sylvia, just Sylvia. So with regard to the other thing that this community has a lot of, are barber shops and beauty salons. How are we getting the word out to them, and how are we helping them? Because this, it's got to hit them the hardest.
So we're going to be working with the mayor's staff and with our deputy commissioner, our other deputy commissioner in the planning department, to spread the word about these funds that the governor has. I will be putting out two applications, one for restaurants and one for other businesses. And we will provide as much technical assistance as we can.
Would you accept volunteers who've already done the forms and to help the other beauty salons and barber shops?
We would welcome as much, as much, as many volunteers who can help us, that would be great.
And I also forgot nail salons also. We have a few of those, quite a few of those.
Yes, yes.
You saw my toes, but I digress, I digress. Go ahead, go ahead.
Madam President, if I may, just quickly, Deputy Commissioner, is there a phone number? What's the best number? Our legislative assistant, Mr. Goodside, put that in the chat just now, and saying, is there a number that the community members can call for additional information about all of this? What's the best number?
So I will have to get back to you on a phone number and contact information. And as soon as I have that, and I'm hoping we put that in the flyer, we can have that information for all of you. So we can distribute.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw.
And so what, one, one?
Yes, go ahead, Deputy Commissioner, go ahead.
One final item. I will be, if everyone, I encourage everyone to look at the data points in the plan, because it, you'll see just how the, there is such a great need in the city in terms of resources, and how important these funds are. I will need, I have put together a resolution for the city council to consider passing the, authorizing the mayor to submit the consolidated plan to HUD. And I will be putting together a referral letter and submitting it to the city council. The sooner we get approval from all of you, the sooner we can submit after the public comment period is completed, which will be this Friday.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Griffin?
I just want to commend Commissioner Bolivar for the exceptional work that she's done, the very diligent work to get these HUD funds and the authorizations from HUD put in line. I don't think people realize how difficult it has been to try to clean up work that was done in the past, and the good favor that we have with HUD now. Sylvia works many, many, many hours, is chair of financing and planning. We've had many, many long discussions, and her work, her team here in City Hall, and the consultants that she's using, have really put us back on the right track for collecting these HUD funds. There used to be a time when we were able to support more of the smaller businesses, including the camps and other funding sources that were more homegrown, but we had to really tighten up how we submitted data to HUD. So we haven't been able to support as many smaller groups as we used to, but that doesn't mean that the funds aren't being utilized correctly. So there's been a lot of wins that have happened over the last few years. The fire trucks are, were a huge win. We had other things in the pipeline, and I, you know, I believe this is my fourth round of submission. So that means that I've been working on this for, I think, 20, maybe it's been 25 years. And it's not easy to get this done, it's a lot of tedious work. The hearings are usually more open, but with COVID, we couldn't have the open hearings like we used to have. So I just want to commend Sylvia, the diligent work that she's done and her team. It's a lot, a lot, a lot of detailed work, and I don't think many of us have recognized her for that work that's been done. So I just want to say thank you to Sylvia and her team here in the planning department for excellent, excellent, excellent work. And we need to follow the lead that's here. I know we want to help some of our smaller businesses. The difficulty is that the paperwork that goes behind all of this funding is what most of our smaller businesses don't do, right? This is why the larger businesses with accountants and teams of attorneys get to submit the paperwork. Those days of giving out quote-unquote "free" money is not as easy to come by. And that's why we still need to support the HUD, our HUD office, with an accountant and with a programming person and a compliance person, so that we could connect all the dots and satisfy HUD, so we can get more funds. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I also want to say that on March 26, we did a virtual public hearing. We used Zoom, and we had wonderful participation. We had about 15 participants, nonprofit organizations, who provided input. We have been working with disability groups as well, because we want to make sure we meet their need as well. And we have worked really hard to make sure that we respond to the needs of the community. And I thank the city council for their support, for believing in us and the work we're doing. And at some other point, we may want to have a conversation about how we help organizations that may need a lot more help than what we're able to currently provide, and what that looks like. Because we need to make sure that we, again, help as many organizations as we can. It may not be through these federal funds, because of the compliance requirements, but we need to think about if we partner with foundations or other non-federal sources to make sure that we get access to funding to support these wonderful organizations, but who may need a lot more help with their compliance piece.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman?
Just a couple of things that, for folks that are listening, and maybe for some council members too. These funds that are coming in from HUD are really your federal dollars that you pay in your federal taxes that go out to the federal government, and they're really just coming back to us where the needs are, right? It's like a reshuffling of the deck. So it's very valid for us to recoup some of these funds that we've paid out. These are our tax dollars. It's not quote-unquote "free" money.
Free money.
It's our money. We need, we've paid into our federal government taxes. This is it coming back through a different sort of allocation, and we have every right to fight for those funds, right? Through the, through the census, to show that we have the numbers to support it. And we realistically have a poverty-based community, and we need to be able to support the people in our community the right way. So all of these services need to be spread. About the compliance issue, absolutely, we need to support some of the smaller organizations, because they don't have the accountants in. I've even recommended that we get an accountant to do the accounting for the smaller organizations, and some of the legal work, so that they can apply for some of these funds and be recognized. You know, if you have a barber shop, you can't keep taking cash and not putting those numbers on the books, because times like this, if you had all your records, you could report what you've lost in this period of time. So being an accountant, these are the things that you try to put together to prove, and that's why the bigger companies are getting all this money back. It has affected our community block grant funds for our smaller organizations as well. They just can't prove their numbers. So we need to find a way to do that. So again, thank you.
And for those small businesses who are listening in, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to the Lehman College SBDC, because they will help you. And if you need an accountant, or if you need advice in terms of your financial paperwork, they will provide technical assistance. And if they can't, they will point you in the right direction. It is a free service to you, because they get paid out of the federal government. So they are there to help you if you're a small business. And another...
Do you have a contact for them that we could put on the, you know, on the website?
Yes, I will give you Clarence Stanley's contact information.
Oh, I know Clarence Stanley personally. But he's there, I thought he was, is it the same Clarence Stanley?
Yep, he's still at, he's still with the Lehman College SBDC. He's done a lot in Mount Vernon in the past, and he will be the one who will be doing the webinar next week regarding the Governor's New York Forward Fund.
That's not the League of, that's not the League of Cities Clarence Stanley. This is a different one.
Well, Clarence, I'm not sure about if he was with National League of Cities in the past, but he has done work in Mount Vernon in the past, and...
Give me the information, because I'm not sure if it's the same one. So give me the information, and if it's a different one. So give it, actually, get it to the deputy clerk, so he could post it on the city's website.
Yep, we will. And then the other thing I wanted to flag is, we are getting homeless funds, ESG funds, for the first time since 2010. And so we will be releasing an application to see which organizations we work with to address homeless needs in the city. We work very closely with the Westchester County Continue of Care Leadership. We have a very strong relationship with our county partners, and know that they're very excited and very pleased to be working with the city.
Okay, great. And Senator Biagi thanks us for our support on the resolution. That's why I blacked out my face. She was calling me to update you, so, and say thank you for supporting the resolution on the criminal justice reform. Okay, is there anything else from the council, or anybody? Deputy clerk, you have anything? Okay, so then, thank you, and good night.
Thank you, good night.
Everyone be safe, stay safe.
Thank you, folks.
And thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
See everyone Wednesday for the council meeting at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.